Regular commission meeting on Wednesday, January 15, 2014. And everybody has to stop talking because we're going to do the flag salute. Would you please join? Oh, you start talking, it's down there. Wait a minute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your mother for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, today, we're going to be making a lot of appointments and also electing our commission president. And do I hear any nominations?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, you have to do.
I have to do anything? Motion?
What are you moving?
I'm motioning to nominate Betty Mum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Betty Mum be the commission president. Is that something you were going to do?
Yes.
Okay, very good. The roll call, please.
Okay.
Or I should say, the vote, please.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
We're voting on a motion.
I'm sorry. I'll start again. The motion was made by Commissioner Roth to, for Commissioner Mum to be the commission president, and it was seconded by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. Like usual, I forget something, and right at the beginning, I forgot to take the roll call, but we'll let the vote substitute for the roll call. Anyway. But congratulations, except I think you have to get sworn in.
I've got to get sworn in.
Oh, you have to get sworn in.
You're out of the square.
That's where I was sworn out.
Oh, that means she's going to sit by me now.
Yeah.
Guess who you get to sit by?
All right. All right. Who would raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Betty Mum.
I, Betty Mum.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Of commission president of City of Oregon City.
Of commission president for City of Oregon City.
During my incumbency thereof.
During my incumbency thereof.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Lorraine. Thank you.
Does that mean she has to sit on the right side?
She has to sit over by me now.
Well, we can switch.
You're not finished until you sign.
Oh, I have to sign.
I started to sign on your line.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'm trying to get used to it.
There you go.
Thank you.
So you want to retain that position on my left?
Well, we can switch later if you want, Kathy. Do you want to do it now?
No, this is fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm going to also take some things out of order because we've sworn in the new president, and I'm going to announce the assignments that the various commissioners are going to have. And since I'm going to be doing that, I'm also going to announce the appointments that I've already made to our various boards and so forth. So I'll take this moment to do that. We have representatives on the Metropolitan Advisory Committee, IMPAC, and I am the representative, and Commissioner Roth is the alternate. South Fork Water Board, which is, which is a treatment plant that's owned jointly by Westland and Oregon City, each entity having three members of their council serving as the board. Our board members are going to be myself, Commissioner Mum, and Commissioner Smith. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, that's C4, will be Betty Mum, and I'll be the alternate on that group. The Regional Wastewater Advisory Committee, I am the representative of that. Main Street Oregon City Board, Commissioner Carol Polly. Willamette Falls Heritage Coalition. We have our Economic Development Manager, Eric Hunterwood, and I serve as alternate for that. The Oregon City Tourism Council, that's Rocky Smith, and also the Clackamas Heritage Partners, also Rocky Smith. So those are the appointments of our, of our members to committees that our board members are, that are supposed to have representatives from the city. Also, we've made appointments to the, I've already made some appointments to the various boards that we have. Chetamir Jessick will be, is appointed to the Transportation Advisory Committee to fill the at-large position for a term ending 2016. Or Steve Johnson to the Transportation Advisory Committee to fill a position through December 31st of 2016. Bob LaSalle will be reappointed to fill the position at large for the term ending 2014. We also have an appointment of Laura Hingham to the Library Board for a term extending to December 31st, 2017. Bob Burns to the Parks and Recreation Committee has a reappointment also, December 2016. And also Robert Mahoney to the Planning Commission, that's also a reassignment, to the term December 2017. We still have several vacancies. We do have applicants coming in, but we had vacancies that weren't filled, there were new vacancies, and so we've reopened the application. It will end on February 3rd. We still have one position on the Budget Committee, that's the City Commission's Budget Committee. The Natural Resources Committee, two vacancies. The Historic Review Board, one vacancy for the Oregon City, and that's specifically for an Oregon City Chamber member. Library Board, one vacancy for a non-resident living outside the city boundaries but within the library district. Metro Enhancement Committee, one vacancy. Oregon Civic Improvement Trust, one vacancy. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, two vacancies. Urban Renewal Budget Committee, two vacancies. So if anybody here are interested in looking at those particular boards and committees, we have it open until February 3rd. The respective boards will interview the candidates. I will be there at the interview, and generally, I follow the board's recommendations as to who they recommend to serve on those committees after the interviews. Now, we had a request. Was there anything else that I needed to cover? Did I get it all? Okay. We had a request from Commissioner Mum for a presentation off our website of the transparency page there, and I believe that our city recorder is going to put that up and talk about it.
Right. One second. It should come up.
And there's the homepage piece, and she's going to show us how to get there.
There, now you can see a little bit better. Okay, so transparency and open government have been sort of hot topics in our world, and Oregon City is actually proud that we have been achieving these goals for many years. And to showcase what we've been doing, we developed this new webpage that outlines the efforts that have been made to increase communications with citizens and to make documents more readily available on the website. And so this page, it describes what we have been doing all along for many, many years. It pretty much goes by department. It talks about policies related to state law, or city policies and state laws that we have to follow regarding our distribution of our records. It talks about the enhanced website tools that, such as OC Request, Facebook, Twitter, different things that we can use to get the word out in a lot of different ways. Each department is listed here, and it goes through and explains what each department does to get the word out regarding whatever's going on in that department, whether it's Neighborhood Association presentations for the South End Concept Plan, or whatever it is that is happening in that, from that department. There's, for instance, the Community Services Department publishes the Trail News. It talks about how all that information gets out into the community. Let's see, what else is here? It's just something that if you, if you want to know what's going on in Oregon City and how to get in touch with the department, all these are links, and you can go to all the different committees, you can go to the departments. Click away, so.
Yes. We talked about this at our work session, and I thought it was very informative, and it would be a good education piece. So if you're on the homepage, what do you do?
Yeah, so here's, let's go back to the homepage. Here's the homepage. And this is a revolving announcement here, and if you just, if you wait a little bit, it'll go to the next one, or you can go to the arrows and just click it until the transportation comes up. And then this is a link here, and you just click there, and you go to that page.
Okay.
Once this, once it leaves there, it's going to be housed under City Government, City Recorder.
Okay.
We'll leave it up there for a while, and then we'll kind of move it back in. But you can always just go to the search field and search on it to find it as well.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Mayor, may I make one more announcement? Just a correction for the record. William Gifford's appointment to the Transportation Advisory Committee, the term is actually expiring on December 31st of 2014 instead of 2017. So it was just an error on my part.
I think I made an error. I don't think I mentioned his name. Sorry. The, I've got a question. How many, how many of our boards, in fact, do we, do we have videos of the meetings available?
Well, let's go, if you go, this is, this is still the homepage. If you go here to Agendas, Minutes, and Videos, what comes up is our Meetings page. And depending on what you ask it to show you, right here, in this case, I've chosen all years and all boards. Down below are listed all the upcoming meetings, and all the way back to about 2008 is here. And that would include the agendas, and the videos, and minutes, once they are approved. So we just have a lot of meetings where they haven't had a meeting yet to approve the minutes, and so they're not there. But all the, all the minutes are there as well.
So.
And they're, they're video streamed. All of the boards and committees are video streamed.
And that's, I think that's what's important to note, that the recommendations coming from the committees and the decision, the decision pieces are all available. You can go right through them and see what we've done.
That's important. I think it's a great website. Thank you.
Also, from this page, if you clicked up here on Boards and Commissions, it will take you to the site here that lists all the different boards and committees, and you can, you know, click on any one of those and get more information.
Well, I think you and your staff, or your team, I should say, did a great job with that page, Transparency.
Thank you. It was combined effort.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything that, well, I guess we'll start, excuse me, we'll adopt the agenda in a moment. This is a time now for citizen comments. Anybody having a comment that come up, will come forward, I'll call you. If you leave, if you leave the note there with the city recorder, I'll call you up two at a time, three minutes for your comments, please. Corey Cassell and Kristine Kaczynski.
Hello.
Hello.
Just indicate whether you're an Oregon City resident or not.
Oh, yeah, I'm an Oregon City resident.
And state your name, just for the record.
Oh, my name's Corey Cassell. Yeah, I hope I can keep it under. It was supposed to be like five minutes, so I'm going to try to speed it up and get it within three, so. All right, hello, my name's Corey Cassell. I'm here as a citizen of this community. My family came across on the Oregon Trail in 1848. You can say that the pioneer spirit is in my blood. I grew up tagging along with my mom while she worked at the Oregon City Pioneer Museums, and I spent summers as a kid weeding gardens in front of the many museums she worked at, watching pioneer videos over and over and over at the museums. I was surrounded by all these pioneers, all these pioneers. Those pictures are forever haunting and inspiring inside my mind, these fearless adventurers who wanted a better life for themselves and would risk everything to get it. These people who rebelled against the norm and who were led by their desire to find a better way. These were my heroes. Not that long ago, these were real people in real time, breathing real air, speaking real words. This is our heritage, this is who we are, and this is who I am. I'm here today because I'm sick and tired of being discriminated against for being a pioneer. In a society with fleeting and unrewarding opportunities, I find myself unable to live through the status quo. I find myself saying, I have to find a better way. So what can I do? I'm here today because there's a need in our community that isn't being met through our current system. I'm here today because I believe I can help. I'm here today because I feel like my city is not recognizing this problem. I'm here today because I'm frustrated with the lack of opportunity, oppression, and despair that is plaguing our generation. I'm here today because I'm offended. I'm offended that this commission has been obtuse to these needs in our community. I'm offended that this city encouraged me to be a pioneer, and now that I'm, I am a pioneer, it turns its back on me. This is why I'm here. The current system for the OMP program is not satisfying. Patients enter the program with high hopes, but they soon learn what I call the big disappointment, the failure of the system to provide a satisfying experience for the patient. It's hit or miss for these patients. They are kind of thrown into the wild to fend for themselves, so to speak. They get their OMP card and immediately have problems. They get ripped off, they have complication with their growers, they can't find a grower, their grower only has one strain, so they build up an immunity towards the strain, making it less effective. They have to drive to Portland, et cetera, et cetera. As a last resort, some people turn to Craigslist to obtain their medicine through a stranger, once again throwing the dice, all the while taking away energy, taking the energy away from and putting stress on the patient who is already suffering from health problems. Plus, they pay the state hundreds of dollars to meet a program, and they're not getting the quality care they deserve. This is unacceptable. We can do better. The good news is our state is doing something about it. Our state representatives passed House Bill 3460, and our governor signed the bill into law, making the dispensary system legal in the state of Oregon. Through a dispensary, a patient can get a first-class, convenient, safe, secure, rewarding experience. And another benefit is the city can accomplish the goals that it set out to do. The commission has goals. I can help you accomplish every single one of your goals. You want to maintain an environment for success, address critical facility needs, enhance the livability of the community. This is my favorite one, seek opportunities to maintain communications with citizens and facilitate citizen participation. And the last one is maintain fiscal health and long-term stability. I have a list of reasons, you know, I've been given in the past why no one has given me, but I'm going to just skip that for time. It seems the Oregon City Commission is the only obstacle that's standing in the way. Like I said earlier, the, you know, President Obama and Eric Holder both went on national television saying they're going to let states decide on how they're going to approach the situation, and, you know, our government, you know, passed House Bill 3460. This commission is picking and choosing which laws they want to follow, all the while discriminating against an entire community of people of which HB 3460 was designed to help, creating despair, poverty, sickness, helplessness, and needless suffering. I refuse to believe that this is the goal of the commission, but these are the consequences of your actions or inactions. So what are we waiting for? The commission wants to create an environment for success. Here's an opportunity. The commission wants to get people off of highly addictive pain medication. Here's an opportunity. The commission wants to enhance the livability of the community. Here's an opportunity. The commission wants to be a leader in the regional hub. Here's an opportunity. The commission wants to create jobs. Here's an opportunity. Let's accomplish these goals. I hope my attempt to beguile you away from your reasoning in the past will succeed. Upon submission, I encourage, upon submission of my application, I encourage you to approve my city business license as soon as possible. I'd like for you to dig down deep and find that pioneer spirit inside of you. I'd like you to recognize what it is, and I'd like to see it reflected through your actions. I'd like you to recognize that people are struggling, discrimination of any kind is unacceptable, and we have the power to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, you had, you had contacted me, and I told you what our current, our current policy is, and invited you to be here tonight.
Thank you.
I don't know if the attorney wants to address the decisions that we made.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Let me quickly give you the, sketch out the background of what's happening. The.
This is regarding medical marijuana dispensary in Oregon City. We had an applicant, well, probably a bit more than a year ago, and we denied it, and we denied it for specific reasons. I think this is our second application.
I think it was 2012. And the basic background is that federal law continues to list marijuana as controlled stuff, since then it's illegal to possess it. As Mr. Cassell said, the president and attorney general have indicated that they're not looking to prosecute people for this, for marijuana possession. The state has adopted by initiative the medical marijuana program, and in the last legislative session, passed a bill that allowed, that set up a program for allowing dispensaries. The, the, one of the issues that is ongoing is what authority or does, do cities have to continue to regulate medical marijuana in light of the House bill? League of Oregon Cities and most cities have come to the position that they still retain the zoning authority and other authority to regulate where dispensaries can and can't be located. Currently, our city has a business license provision that requires every business in the city to have a business license, and says no license shall be issued to any business prohibited by local, state, or federal law. And so at this point, what the city is, is, looks at the medical marijuana businesses, says that what they're intending to do is violates federal law, even, you know, even if the federal government has indicated they're not willing to prosecute, it is still prohibited by federal law, and so the city has not been issuing business licenses to businesses that propose this. The regulations implementing the medical marijuana dispensary law have not been final. They're draft ones out. I think the expectation is that there's some time in March is when they're expected to be final. It's uncertain whether they're going to address the question of how much regulation cities retain. There's some discussion, it may be a topic of a bill at least in the 2015 legislative session, but that, that's still going to work itself out. As you know, the state of Washington recently passed something legalizing it in that state. There's an expectation that there's going to be a similar initiative in Oregon, probably next November. So this is an ongoing and evolving area of law. But right now, with our business license and our understanding of the code and the authority the city has, because it is the proposal, a proposal to operate a dispensary would violate federal law, the city has not been issuing business licenses. So that's, that's sort of the background. If we wanted, if the city wanted to, you could take some steps, and we can, I could talk with the city manager and come back with some, some ideas if, if there's, if you'd like us to take a deeper look at it.
The commission, 2012, and I think you were on already, Carol, when that decision was made. We basically consent that we didn't want medical marijuana dispensaries located in Oregon City. I don't know if anybody's changed their opinions on that, and if you do, we can probably discuss that in a study session if you, if you want to discuss such a possible change.
I'd like to discuss it in the study session.
Okay. So we'll put that on the agenda for a study session discussion.
Okay, I'd really appreciate it. I brought just a copy of some stuff that you guys could look at.
Leave it with the city recorder.
No samples.
Can I give it to her? Absolutely not.
You bought a copy of what?
Just a few articles and stuff.
Oh, yeah, leave it with the city recorder.
I'd get up and leave.
Yeah, yeah, and then Kristine Kaczynski. Go ahead. Sure, sure, three minutes.
I won't even need three minutes. Kristine Kaczynski, I live in unincorporated Clackamas County, and the hamlet of Beaver Creek is here with me tonight. I am here to make a request from the city and from John Lewis to consider a second community forum this coming fall to cover the LiDAR and new susceptibility landslide maps from Dogami, an update to earthquakes and emergency management. About two years ago, Nancy Crushour led a committee from the city and a member from the hamlet of Beaver Creek to create the first community forum of its kind. It was very well attended, held at Willamette Falls Education Building, where the theater was a perfect place for such an event. We started the preparation for the workshop in March for an October forum. At the completion of the first forum, Nancy felt the city should consider an update within the next couple of years, and we wondered if this wouldn't be an opportune time since the new susceptibility maps are being released. I'm sure the hamlet would be happy to once again be part of the planning process for such an event. It would be beneficial if the original committee could form again and begin work. These events are very valuable to your people. It does give the city a well-informed and better-prepared community. It's like insurance to the city to have its people well armed. Thank you.
Thank you.
David, Ron, you want to make any comments about proceedings, something like that at this point?
I don't.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Jonathan Stone.
Jonathan Stone, resident of Oregon City as well as executive director of Main Street Oregon City. So the reason I'm here tonight is a few things. I just wanted to make the announcement that at yesterday's board meeting, we had elections for new, for the new executive board, and just wanted to acknowledge them. And so the new president is David Nash, who is the Edward Jones advisor on Main Street. Barbara Orton, who's, will be the vice president, and she is, owns Commstructure Consulting, as well as the building that our offices are located in. And then Carol, did you confirm?
No. I will confirm. I'll get back to you.
Tentatively, Carol will be our secretary. We're just dotting a couple i's and crossing a couple t's.
This was just yesterday.
Then, but also Ron Yost, who owns Coffee Rush, will be our treasurer. But, so that's just a quick announcement regarding that, but more importantly is the fact that Main Street Oregon City is undergoing program review February 4th and February 5th. Sherry Stewart, who is the state director, has invited two experts with regards to downtown revitalization. One is actually flying in from Missouri, another one will be coming down from Washington State to help review our program and make sure that we are doing the best job that we can in terms of serving downtown Oregon City. So I'm very thankful that they're pulling together those kinds of resources. That being said, there is opportunity for input into the program review, and I ask that if anyone, citizen or commission or otherwise, has any specific comments or is interested in possibly participating in the process, just to let me know. And my contact information is on our website, which is downtownoregontity.org. There are a number of focus groups that are being put together for February 4th. The first, you know, will be retailers, as well as city representatives, and then we're assembling a number of other groups that represent downtown stakeholders. So that invitation is open. I'm not exactly sure who, what, how, but if anybody expresses specific interest, maybe we'll be able to accommodate that. Then the third and final thing is illuminate Oregon City, which we are all anticipating greatly, is kicking off on a week from today. And I got the opportunity to see the finished video on, what is today, Wednesday? On Tuesday, yesterday, I'm sorry. And there are some pretty fascinating images that the artist has put together, and I won't spoil the show, but there, there's a whole new way to sort of look at the elevator, and I mean that literally, as well as figuratively, so.
I can't wait. I'm just so excited.
So 6:30 PM, the weather looks like it's going to be great, and it should be a good time, and the artist, I know, will really appreciate the attendance from everybody that could possibly attend, so.
And is that the base of the elevator?
Base of the elevator, yes.
My understanding is there will be festivities going on? Am I correct? And will we have some roads closed, just to let people know?
Yeah, we'll be closing 7th from Main to Railroad and a section of Railroad between 6th and, well, it's a one-way street, so 6th. 6th and, well, it's a one-way street, so 6th.
So there'll be things to do, with addition watching the video.
Jonathan, you know the details of, of the things and the groups.
Things, the things are, there will be a trio band led by Ken Brewer. Some know hi, some know him for his work with Big Yellow Taxi. And then as long as the final things are approved, Nebbiolo will be out there, you know, grilling sausages and, and vending wine and beer, as well as King's Raven Winery, which was a participant in the video, who's featured in the video, will be vending wine as well. And so in addition to the, the ceremony, we just hope that it's just a fun time to come down and hang out in downtown Oregon City, so.
Could you just let us know the hours that the video will run?
The video will be running, the, the present plan is that it'll run every night from dusk until midnight. I'm, I'm just learning that apparently dusk happens pretty late in the summer.
Yes.
And so that, there might be opportunity to consider rescheduling that if, if it's only going to run for two hours, say, in the middle of the summer. But, you know, it all depends on when people are going to be around and how much it costs to operate, so.
Midnight's still the same time.
And then we will own that equipment, just make it clear, so we'll have control over certain things. That's good.
Yes, the, the grant, after the grant is completed, the projector becomes for the property of, of the city.
Right.
And the, and the program?
I believe so.
Yes.
That's the way it's supposed to go, yeah.
I believe so.
I have one kind of an obscure question. You know how we have the little charm bracelets? Charm bracelets of all different things? Is there a charm bracelet for the, or a charm for this?
I honestly don't really know anything about the charm bracelets.
No.
That's an event.
Yeah, that is a chamber thing. Oregon City is charming, but that would be a good suggestion to suggest to the chamber about having some icons of Oregon City. That'd be great.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. And Ginger Redlinger, please. Howdy. Yes, should be.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Ginger Redlinger. I am with the Oregon City School District, the Director of Community Education and Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Initiatives. And I'm here tonight to invite you and the community and all the citizens, everyone in the room, to an event that will be held at the Jackson Campus, March 6th, 7th, and 8th. It's the first robotics regional competition that Oregon City has been awarded. This is a national group, a very large event. We expect between 750 and 1,000 people to be attending over a two-and-a-half-day period. This will bring, of course, a lot of good news to our local businesses. And it is such a fun event to see what these high school students have done with a kit of parts in six weeks to build a robot that has either an offensive or a defensive strategy, to have to work cooperatively with team members that are assigned through different rounds. It is so much fun. It is the funnest thing that you can watch kids do. So there will be a VIP event. We will, you'll be receiving invitations to come to a meal and tour and to meet other people who are involved in putting this together. And we really look forward to having everyone attend. It's free for families. We encourage families to come and cheer on the pioneers.
That's great. I know, I've known a couple of the students that have actually submitted on those and they find it very exciting. I mean, they're just getting, they're thrilled with the opportunity of doing something creative.
Actually, I worked with that program at Ogden a long, long time ago.
Right, right.
And it was great to watch the kids grow through that.
We have actually a kindergarten through third grade program called Junior First Lego League. They're currently working in their team process. Right now, it's another six weeks. Prior to that was the First Lego League, which is third grade to fifth grade. And then there's the First Tech Challenge, the FTC teams, which go through middle school and we have two this year. And then the FRC, the First Robotics Competition, which is the high school team. So it's everything from construction to programming. It's fascinating. You should come see.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. I appreciate you coming out and inviting us all.
Yes.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Ginger, I, I think there's a question about hours, because you didn't list hours. And then I was curious, this morning on, I think it was on Channel 8, there were, there were, there was another similar event. Is it, is it the same thing? Or did you, do you know, I guess?
The, I didn't see the news on Channel 8, so I'm not sure which one it is. There, there are three total events. There's one being hosted by Oregon State University. There's one hosted by Wilsonville, and we were awarded the first one. We are the first one in Oregon, at Oregon City. And then the Auto Desk Regional, which is the first weekend in April, which where all the teams that have earned lots of points through the district competitions get an opportunity to compete there.
And the Times?
The Times, it will be all day Saturday, so it'll start about nine o'clock in the morning. And then it will go to about six o'clock at night each evening. And like I said, it's free and we encourage families to come. Please carpool.
That's probably a good idea.
Well, I have a 12-year-old boy who will not want to miss this.
Yeah, absolutely. And the, and the girls, I mean, there's just, the cheering sections, you've never seen such spirit in students.
It's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, now we'll go into the adoption of the agenda. Is there anything, anybody wants pulled from the concern agenda?
No.
None? Go right into the public hearing. Then this is a continuance of the public hearing and my understanding is it will be continued again.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, we're going to be beginning the presentation for the South End Concept Plan. I have, our team will come up and give a presentation. What we're, what we are requesting is that right now, the citizen advisory team worked for over a year putting together a plan that they did forward. The Planning Commission has been holding public hearings on that plan. Their last meeting, we did continue it for an additional hearing in front of the Planning Commission. So we are requesting that you hear an introductory presentation from our team and then any questions that you may have, but then also take any public testimony from anyone who's interested in testifying tonight. And then we will continue it to a date certain. And I believe on the staff report, we put February 5th. Because of the timing with the Planning Commission, we are going to request that instead of February 5th, that we do continue it to February 19th. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Pete Walter.
Thank you. So we'll be giving you a brief overview tonight. We did do a work session, joint work session with you back in November. And so this will be a little bit of a recap for you. Without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Steve and then I'm going to finish up the last few slides.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here again to present to you. I've been fortunate to work on the South End Concept Plan with the Oregon City and South End communities over the past year and a half or so. So we'll do a, just a brief overview for you tonight. The South End Concept Plan, one of the first things we did as part of this process was establish a vision and values. I'm not going to go through all the details of the vision. There are five values and, and what we heard from most, from a lot of folks was that rural character in particular was important to them. So while, so what we tried to strive for was a balance between meeting our regional requirements and maintaining as much rural character as possible. We were led by a wonderful community advisory team, 17 folks from the, both representing different interests and aspects of the community. Pete laid those out here, from, you know, folks from the city at large to the business community, faith-based organizations, the school district and others. They met seven times over the course of the project to guide the public involvement process and make key decisions. We launched the community engagement process by holding 17 conversations, what we call community conversations, with groups throughout the city. I have a list of those there, where we asked two basic questions. What do you like about South End today? And what do you want, if you could, what would you change to make it even better in the future? And those, those two questions, the result, the information we got back from those two questions was really what the vision and values were based on. We had four large community events throughout the process. The first was the Vision and Values Open House, where folks affirmed the vision and value, the draft vision and values that we presented. The second and most exciting, I think, of the four was the Community Design Workshop. I, I should mention, each of these large public meetings was attended by approximately 100 residents. And in this meeting, folks had game pieces representing housing and business and parks and trails, and they got to make their own maps of what they thought South End should look like in the future. Some folks, this one says stay the same. And so some folks, you know, voiced their opinion that they didn't want anything to change, which we understand. But a majority of the maps looked more like this one with a variety of uses and looking similar to what we think the, the concept diagram that came out of the process looks like. The third community event was to look at the three, based on the 18 maps that came out of that previous public meeting, our consultant team, along with city staff, created three alternatives. And at this, the first of two future, forum on the future of South End, the first one, folks looked and told us what they liked and disliked about each of those three alternatives. And we took their likes and created a preferred alternative, which on June 1st, I believe, we had a strawberry social outside McLaughlin Elementary, and folks were able to kind of hear the final draft plan and give their final comments. And so what you have is this concept plan diagram. And I'm, I'll just go over some of the key features briefly. Natural features, to the best of our ability, we strove to preserve contiguous natural spaces and wildlife corridors. In some exceptions, we needed roads to go across some of these natural resources, but we chose the most narrow parts for those crossings. We look to improve access to natural areas such as canoa bluffs and views. In terms of parks and trails, we have a network of parks, new gathering places, including one large park sufficient for ball fields or other programming activities, and identified possible locations for future civic uses. As I mentioned, a number of, a network of trails that connect residences to commercial businesses as well as into regional trails and parks, schools, things of that nature. In particular, we, we envision using some of the utility corridors for trails. That's one of our goals. And there was a concern early on from some folks, they had, they understood that maybe private housing developments, that their public, their common areas would be taken for public use. And we just wanted to reassure folks that the preservation of private open space would be for non-public uses. A mix of, of housing options and choices for people of all price ranges and designations from single-family, large, medium, and small, all the way to multifamily and mixed-use housing. And small lot residential located in, are clustered in two areas around neighborhood commercial along South End Road. So there's really, I'll go back quickly, these two nodes where you see the darker red and the darker orangish colors, that's where the commercial and small lot residential would be located. In terms of transportation, a complete network of streets that promotes connectivity and increases travel options. So there are options beyond just South End Road for, for panning out through a, a network of streets. A lot of pedestrian and bicycle improvements, giving mode options. As, all of the recommendations are mirrored in the Transportation System Plan, including South End Road becoming a three-lane arterial. And then just to the west, another, two family-friendly roads, one of which, which will be a collector. I'll leave it at that there. And then infrastructure, new water and sewer infrastructure constructed along with roads to meet community needs, stormwater retention ponds and swales along natural features. And there would be the need for a new sewer lift station.
So as far as implementation goes, and we will be presenting this to you at the next hearing, once we have a Planning Commission recommendation, the plan includes financing estimates, which are cost estimates for public improvements for trunk main sewer water and stormwater recommendations, and identifies funding sources for those. Along with that, we are proposing a comprehensive plan amendment, which applies city land use designations within the urban growth boundary with the adoption of the concept plan. And that serves as our land use guide for future annexation. We also have a set of draft zoning code revisions, which would apply upon annexation. And that would mean city zoning and development code, such as overlay zones, design standards, and various other zoning that we have applying upon annexation of properties. This is a draft comprehensive plan map, which shows the land use, the broad land use designations reflected on the concept map. And we'll be describing this in detail for you later. This slide is our best attempt at a crystal ball, basically, or, you know, a, what I call the best guess at what the future process might be. So we are in control of the South End Concept Plan, and then property owners are in control of whether they submit an annexation to the city in the future, and that's based on their desire and market conditions, proximity to services and those sorts of things. So once the plan is adopted, it sets the stage for annexations. And following that, zoning. Following that, development review. And finally, building permits. And this process will repeat for each property that is proposed for annexation. And it could take a long time for the area to build out. We show a timeline from now until 2040. Finally, our estimated public hearing schedule. As we said, the Planning Commission is still holding the public hearings. We have some additional information to present to the Planning Commission before they form a recommendation. They'll be meeting on February 10th. And then we will be requesting a continuance tonight to the city commission hearing on February 19th, at which time we will be presenting our staff report, detailed findings, and the complete record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I came, I was at another meeting and I came in just in time to miss the presentation to the Planning Commission, but heard, I think, most of the public comment that was given. And was one of the reasons for the continuance. And the Planning Commission had a lot of recommendations as well. I wanted to just make one comment that we had, I can't remember the woman that was here, John, but that talked about stormwater issues and detention ponds.
At the last meeting? At the Planning Commission meeting?
No, before us.
Oh, the city came for a workshop, Krista Reininga?
That's probably it.
From Brown and Caldwell?
Yeah, that's correct. And I, and the reason I bring this up is that several, several years ago, we had an out-of-city resident who participated in lots of the hearings and so forth, and actually gave a great deal of insight, but lived outside the city, had a well, and had been commenting how the water level had been decreasing in the well as development occurred. And of course, we've, we've improved a lot in our, in our, in our retention systems. I think at first, they weren't as well-designed as they are now. We've learned a lot in the process. But I'm sure that some of these lands that are in this area probably are operating off of wells. And the weather, the stormwater system that we developed can serve not only as a detention system, but a retention system, and perhaps assist in the recharging of the, of the aquifers that are there in, in the process, leaving less water to, to run off. And I don't know if that's in anybody's thoughts at this point. I just wanted to throw it out there.
The plan does include some conceptual ideas as far as stormwater drainage and recommendations for further, further study as public work starts to work on the stormwater and low-impact development standards this year and into 2015. So, yes.
One, one thing I'll state, in, in that spirit, we've talked to you, Krista Reininga was the person who came and spoke on behalf of Brown and Caldwell and talked about our stormwater standards. And the trend now is going to infiltration. And sometimes that's a challenge in Oregon City, but I think your point is well-taken, that we need to work hard at trying to infiltrate that water back into the, into the water table. And that's the industry trend right now, is instead of building these, you know, large detention facilities, all detention facilities, although we still, detention still is, is practical in some situations and probably will be in this one. Infiltration is going to be a new approach that we're gonna, we're actually just now kicking off a plan, actually, this, tonight, there's a commission agenda, it's a consent agenda item, to award a contract to Brown and Caldwell. And one of the tasks under that is to develop a low-impact development standards manual, it's our stormwater design manual, but they have, there's a section on low-impact development, and a lot of that talks about infiltration. So we're headed there, we're going in that direction, and I think, you know, this plan is probably not, probably not at that level of concept design, but we're working on it for more of a development standard design.
Any, any questions? Of course, we're going to be hearing more, and then once the planning commission makes its recommendations, Commissioner Mumm.
So, I think I brought this up before, Tony, you may remember, transportation. Okay, so on this, it says you're going to do a three-lane arterial. Can you show me where that's going to be on South End?
The street sections for a three-lane arterial is, so you're basically, it would look something like Malala Avenue with a center turn lane. It would require, as development occurs, there may be additional right-of-way dedication required to accommodate it.
Right. But where are you going to put that on South End Road?
Right. Well, as, would probably follow the current Santa Wine as far as, and then it's going to take a long time for that road section to develop.
This is my issue. You take South End Road down to High Street, it's narrow, it's windy, there's no view. I know that you said in here there's a view.
We're talking, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And then on the other side, you take it down to 99. You know, those are, that is going to get all backed up. Both ends are not a good, there's not a good answer to either end for transportation.
So the ends.
And I don't know that you can do anything with the South End down to High Street.
Right.
I think that one thing that we'll bring back at the next hearing, because obviously transportation has been something we've heard throughout the process as well as to the planning commission, so we can come back and address your question specifically and show you some of the results concerning the intersection improvements to deal with the level of service as you go north along South End. And we can have a further discussion about, you know, what we tend to see is that the intersection is the issue. It's not necessarily the, the road. It's dealing with South End, Warner Parrot, it's dealing with South Second, it's dealing with 99E, where you have those intersections which are all stop-controlled except for the intersection with 99E. And so we can come back with our traffic consultant, and we can walk through those, those transportation findings.
But I do want to say that I think you guys have done an awesome job. I like planning, I think that's great. My biggest concern is that road. And there's like no place you can go on one side, and I don't want to dump a bunch of traffic into the neighborhoods over on the other side. That's my issue.
I would say that probably 50% of the citizen confidence, if not more, dealt with transportation issues than that other than.
Commissioner Mumm, one thing I'll point out on the three-lane segment, much of the South End Road area that's been developed with subdivision kind of development is striped with two lanes, but, and there's usually parking and then a wide area for bike lanes and really, you know, wide, wide lanes. So the intent is that that, those areas where it's developed from curb to curb where we have subdivisions, will at some point in time stripe that in a way that will accommodate a three-lane segment. Now, it might not be consistent, but for instance, in front of John McLaughlin School, you know, it'd be nice to have a center lane there so that vehicles could utilize that a little better than they do right now. And so there's a lot of places that are already built that way, and we're talking about kind of connecting those. And I think that's what the plan showcases, but Tony's right, the intersections are really where we need kind of maybe a turnpocket.
And you referred to Malala Avenue. And if you ever tried to get out of Malala Avenue from my street at 5:00 in the afternoon, you're sitting there a long time, a long time before you can pull out. So I'm not sure Malala Avenue is a good statement for me.
Tony said that.
I mean, personally, hmm.
It is a good example of what a three-lane section is.
I don't know about Malala Avenue.
It's an example of a three-lane.
I think I use that as an example where you're taking a lot of traffic capacity and you're accommodating a bike lane on both, both sides and a turnpocket.
Which I understand, you need bikes, you need pads, and I want to give people options, and I want to have whatever form of mass transit, whether it be Trimed or something else up there. You know, I understand you have to have options for people, and I'm all about planning. My big thing is the road. But then I have another comment too, but if somebody else wants to go, you can go.
You're, you're the only commissioner on.
Oh, I'm the only commissioner on?
I do have a question.
That'd probably change, but keep going.
Okay, so in the plan, on 28, page 28, it says right here, and I don't know if you have the plan before you, but you can look at mine. Because I know it by heart. The last bullet point, the third option, I love that option, okay? I really do. That is a great option.
Do you want to read it to us?
Okay, so this is under the transit recommendations.
Yes, yes.
There, there are.
Do you guys not know this plan?
In relation, and I watched, I watched the video the other night from Trimed, so this is timely.
Yes.
A third option would be to work together with another transit provider such as Canby Area Transit. Canby Area Transit's orange line currently travels from the Canby Transit Center to the Oregon City Transit Center. So that's.
I love that plan. Okay. Then the other issue that I have personally is the implementation. Once you adopt this, this goes into our master plan, and away you go. So I really want to have the transportation, the roads kind of nailed down for me to approve, okay?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to come, I think, I think you're, you're quite right. We ultimately are dealing with a concept plan. Implementation, of course, will be involved a great deal more than that in the process, so.
It changes the zoning and all that, so we have to be very thoughtful.
Well, I just want to clarify that the concept plan doesn't change zoning. The areas that are currently within the UGB that are not in the city maintain county zoning and their land uses until the property owner decides to do something else.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pauling?
Yes. So kind of on that note, I have a question of the zoning process for the South End Concept Plan. So you said that when the property is annexed in, at that time, the zoning will be applied. Is that pretty static with the South End Concept Plan for the medium density, the little color blocks that you had on there? Or is there wiggle room for that, and how does that process work?
Well, the comprehensive plan will bind the zoning based on our current annexation code and our zoning definitions code. We have a default zoning that applies based on a land use designation, and if you're low-density residential, it will default to R10. If you're medium-density residential, it would default to R5. Our policy is to have the property owner request a separate rezoning if they want the higher-density zone, so we can analyze the impact even more, in more detail at that time, when you know current conditions. That's an important point to make, because trying to apply zoning now without knowing what's going on nearby. So that's the current policy, and the way we've been doing annexations in the past is to just keep the county designation until a zoning designation is finalized. But here we have a concept plan that will guide the zoning, and it will be for the lowest density unless the property owner requests something else.
Right. So my question is, it's a guide, but depending on what the property owner requests.
Yeah. So, yeah, we've analyzed the impacts based on the highest-density zone with each, within each land use category. So if, we've done, we've looked at the worst-case scenario for traffic impacts, for example, and demand on water and sewer and that sort of thing. And so there will be a range, there's a range of housing units in the plan, and depending on which zoning might be applied in the future. We're look, and we'll talk about what that final number is, because Metro has signed off on our concept plan as substantially compliant with Metro Title 11. We'll talk about that in more detail. We're looking at between 2,500, around 2,500 units of housing. It could be less, could be more in the future.
Thank you. That's one of the things I get a lot of questions about.
I think, I think what it does, that you don't see in some of the other parts of the city, where we've, we've done concept plans in Beaver Creek, Park Place, and now South End. In the other parts of the city, we didn't have a concept plan, we didn't have an idea of how we wanted to zone properties, where public parks would be. You know, it was, it was all done independently. This, this will serve as another tool for you to, for the, whatever commission's in place when development does start to occur, to make decisions. So if you're looking at this map, the lighter white is our low-density residential, the little darker brown is the medium-density residential. So if someone all the way to the west side of the prop, of the project site along the Canema Bluff came in and said, you know, "I really want to, I really want to do R3.5 out here, I want a comp plan amendment from low-density to medium-density, and I want the highest density that I can get." Well, you can use this tool to say, well, it doesn't really comply with the vision and the public process that we went through. So it's just another tool to help you make decisions in the future about what is the appropriate zoning in this area, so.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. We're going to have additional public comment, and Christine Kosinski and Paul Edgar, would you please come forward?
I really didn't have time to prepare notes tonight, so I have nothing to turn in. Christine Kosinski, I live in unincorporated Clackamas County. Traffic density geological constraints, gee, these sure sound familiar. Regarding the density problems, I talked to Pete the other night about considering a retirement-assisted living facility similar to a small, scaled-down Rosevilla, incorporating small cottages and treehouses to house elderly family members or college students. Adding a community nursing home so that property owners within the development can take a small, easy walk down the street to visit their family and loved ones. A retirement center would be a huge help in meeting your density requirements. In addition, will not generate large amounts of traffic. When visiting a facility such as Rosevilla, it is easy to see the beauty, the serenity, and the peaceful environment that it lends to the community while at the same time allowing the people to be active participants. I believe there is a large need for such a facility in this part of the city, and would make a great addition to the plan. Oregon City does have difficult, steep slopes and topography issues, where other cities may not suffer such problems. Metro needs to acknowledge these serious constraints and density figures I feel should be seriously downgraded. Metro needs to understand that citizens cannot obtain insurance to cover losses due to landslides. To force homes and properties into such dangerous areas is simply wrong. I feel Metro is being remiss in not acknowledging the serious deficiencies that parts of Oregon City suffer from. Traffic and transportation, I probably need to see, need to say nothing other than ditto. We in Park Place understand the plight of the people living in the South End area. Traffic was the second-largest in, issue to derail the Park Place Concept Plan. In both plans, there is only one major arterial, which is already in gridlock and failing. Redland Road specifically is seriously constrained on all sides due to landslides. It floods. And to fix the problem, the road needs to be raised. The costs are astronomical. Costs also are prohibitive in trying to put in new roads over dangerous slides, earthquake faults, and the many streams present in the area. Unfortunately, large development in areas such as parts of South End and Park Place simply do not pencil out. There is no amount of money that can fix the many deficiencies, build all the bridges, raise all the roads, and address the multitude of geological problems that exist in these parts of the city. And please understand that the city, I believe, is more than $80 million short of funding its TSP. Metro needs to address the geological issues that exist here. Density should be downgraded, and traffic gridlock addressed. Perhaps there is, there, this is a better time to address the real need for the city, and that is for bringing jobs. I do not believe the city needs more homes until people finally have local, living-wage jobs, and they're not driving sometimes more than 100 miles a day. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Mr. Edgar?
Thank you, Mayor Neely and Commission. I hope you have, let me wait for a second until you can get all of this. This front page of this, of the packet that I brought for you today is the DKAS understandings about the number of house unit, housing units coming in or forecasted to come in, the square footage of commercial area. And I want to have, remind you of the amount of development we've had out on Beaver Creek and some of these other areas where we've had land for years and years, maybe 10, 20 years, and no retail development or commercial development. And here in this case, we're talking about 34, 340,000 square feet, and I feel that's inconsistent with reality. But more importantly is the number of housing units. And I, and when you take this number of housing units, if you go to the second page, I want you to take a look at this kind of drawing of a lot. And so this is a 200 by 200 lot as specified in the plan, and if we're talking 54% of the developable land will be in this type of high-density, 12 to 14 dwelling units. So, gosh, I'm saying, how do I divide that up? So that's like a 3,000-square-foot lot, 33 feet wide, and, or if it's 14 dwelling units, 28 feet wide. And we're going to put this way out on South End Road, where we have only one way in and one way out. The next page talks about just kind of a visualization of something more reasonable, where we come along and have a lot, and I'm a senior, and seniors like to have single-level type housing, not two-story. And all of a sudden, I have the ability to put the type of housing that is very important and people are buying on the marketplace. So that would create like a 6,700-square-foot lot. And these types of lots are designed with a 20-foot alleyways for fire protection. The next map is a map reflecting the actual traffic that we have on South End Road at Warner Parrot right now. So right now, on the PM peak, we have 2,405 incidents of travel or trips at Warner Parrot and South End Road. We have 1,822 trips in peak period on South End Road going down to Second and High Street in that section from Second and High to Warner Parrot. We have, right now, 922 trips on, on Warner Parrot. It's interesting that when we look at the percentages of trips that are outlined in the South End Road plan, they show 50% of the trips on South End Road going down the hill. However, history shows us, from physical trip counts where we measured the trips by a car going across the trip counter, that that's not true. That is a total misrepresentation of the actual trips and the trip distribution that is currently happening, and we have that, is identified on the very next page. You'll see a trip count analysis done in 4/13/2011 in a down economy. And it shows all of the trips by each intersection in each direction, direction you're going. I took those trips, added them all up. I took those trips, added them all up to calculate the actual trips, and I reflect that on this map. I reflect those that are going southbound, those that are going northbound. I even reflect in here the number of trips that are passing through on South End Road, crossing across from, from Partlow to get onto South End Road because these are oftentimes people coming from red soils or from the college or something, and they're trying to get to Canby or someplace south in Clackamas County. But what it really reflects is that the county or in the mapping that was done on trips, all of a sudden, they lost 2,000 incidents of travel. It reflects that the trips that they're reflecting in mapping do not reconcile with actual history of trips that are generated right now from physical counts. They're taking modeling and a big computer someplace, and all of a sudden, we take the real trips and the model trips, and the model trips are fiction and the real trips we know are fact and because they were physically measured. So I would like to go to the last page, and this is a document that was actually originally prepared by Tom O'Brien. And I, I added to it the actual number of trips on this under, if you'll see a heading that says "from 4/15 to 6/15," and that was taken from those trip counters. And I actually measure off the number of trips by eastbound, left, westbound, northbound, southbound, right turn, left turn. And that's how we get up to the total number of trips. And then we come across, and if we add to it, well, what it boils down to is that we know that the number of trips that are gonna be generated in the South End Concept Plan with his, the density that they're recommending is going to create approximately 3,000 trips in a peak period, AM peak period, PM peak period. Now, they only account for 755. So out of 3,000 additional trips, the rest of the trips in this modeling plan just seem to fly up into the air and disappear. And so we can come back and we can see the number of trips we have at each one of the intersection. All I'm turning around and saying is, Betty, you're right. The trips that they're talking about are not right. We got problems.
I didn't bring up trips, but that's okay.
Well, we've got to understand the congestion level. Just think of all of those people that have bought houses and own houses south of Warner Parrot and South End Road right now. And they're going to have congestion that is going to be, is going to reduce their property values because all of a sudden, people are trying to get through intersections and there's only one intersection they can get through. There's no, they can't go east, they can't go west. And so those people are going to be fighting and their house values are going down. Their quality of life is going down. I think this is a critical issue that we are going to affect the property values of that section of town with this level of density, and it's not in it. We don't really have a way out, and I'm very concerned about the cost implications of trying to correct this because you're not gonna take out the South End Road, South End Market. You're not gonna take out the new townhouses built on the other corner of South End and Warner Parrot. And now all of a sudden, you start to look there, "How am I going to do this?" And I looked at the estimates and, and all of a sudden, we have 40% of our trips are on Warner Parrot, and they only show 10. So what are we gonna do?
Well, I think that'll come up.
I know, and, and we've asked that, and, but it just shows the absolute inaccuracy on the initial recommendations in Trip County, and it shows that we've got real problems. And I hope very much that we can all work together to sort it all out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Retirement homes, it's a good idea. I might do it.
I like it, too.
I want to know what a treehouse is.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, good idea.
Treehouses are really small. They're smaller than cottages. Cottages could be like 1,000 to 1,400 square feet. But there's other areas in the state that do use this, and it's a perfect place for like a mother-in-law.
All I need is money.
Or a college student.
Then I could buy a chunk of land and build it.
Nobody's ever concerned about father-in-laws, you know that? Always talk about mother-in-law.
Yeah, that's right.
Never talk about father-in-law.
That's right. I agree. Because all, all guys die early, you know, work hard die early.
Show all these, show all these kids waving in front of a, in front of a camera saying, "Hi, Mom." They never say, "Hi, Dad." Do you notice that?
I think you've got another issue going on here.
Kathy Hogan and Tom O'Brien, please.
Oh, you missed Kathy.
Yes.
No, I said Kathy Hogan, Tom O'Brien. I mentioned two names. Pay attention.
I wasn't paying attention.
I'll go ahead and go first. Okay, thank you. Kathy Hogan, I live in the urban growth boundary.
Not that it matters because this affects me, cross-traffic. And, but my issues are the landslides, hydrology, especially like I testified the other night, is when you start caddying and pushing all that dirt around, it's gonna change the water table. And how are you gonna correct it? What is gonna be implemented that they find that they're making a mistake? What safeguards are there to correct it? And Paul Espy from the County Commission, I talked about the, um, South End is having an issue going up the hill. There's a landslide there. Granted, the wire stopped it, but it's pretty big and it's pushing on it. So that's just the start of it, and that's not even all the developments you're gonna put in there. So that road going down South End could be gone one day with what's happening, depending on which way the water flows. And it, on the bluff, too. So that really is a big concern. And I agree with the other speakers and Tom, even though I haven't heard him speak.
Tom, do you want to tell us what he, what she agrees with?
She had a sneak peek.
I heard it, I heard it the other night. I, I still agree with him. That's why I was so sure.
I use a club on her.
Yeah, all right.
My name is Tom O'Brien, and I am a citizen of Oregon City, resident of Hazel Grove, Westling Farms area. I'd like to preface my remarks by the fact that, number one, I recognize that I will no longer be in this community at the time that this is built out. So I don't have a dog in this fight, but I am concerned about the people who are going to follow me. In one regard, I, I like the high density because already we have people knocking on doors in our neighborhood and saying, "Can I buy your home?" Because we just are not building any single-level homes for our aging population. So, you know, in many regards, it's in my best interest if you build a lot of homes out there. But what I want to review with you tonight is the handout that I gave you. I am very concerned about the traffic issue. And I served on the cat, and I think they did an outstanding job. Unfortunately, we never addressed or were involved in the transportation aspect of the plan. That was all handled by the TAC, TAT. Last week, finally, was released on the city's website, the transportation plan for the South End Concept. And the figures that you see in front of me are part of what was released last week. So you have before you three pages. Exhibits A, B are provided for your verification of the numbers and the dates that I have listed in Exhibit C. A is part of the transportation plan for the South End Concept Plan that was released to the public this past week. B is a report of actual transportation counts which were taken in April 13, 2011, and that's up in the upper right-hand corner of B. My focus is on C. The column one represents the direction of travel as indicated in both of these studies. Column two lists the number of projected trips based on the South End Concept Plan data in Exhibit A. Column three lists the actual transportation counts that are shown in Exhibit B. You'll recall that in April 2011, we were about two and a half years into our depression, which would indicate that we probably show lower-than-normal numbers in that survey. And those were traffic counts with counterboxes. When questioned regarding the method used to develop the South End Concept Plan numbers, the individuals involved explained that Metro, and therefore the city's consultant, uses a different method than what has been used historically. This new method reflects the belief that a greater percentage of our aging population is expected to use bicycles, public transportation, or walk to get from point to point in future years. This explanation, in my opinion, does not adequately explain the significant deviation from reality indicated by the two sets of numbers. The combined neighborhoods of South End and Hazel Grove, Westling Farms currently have 2,308 dwelling units, according to city records. That was just updated to the last CIC. How can this intersection experience 1,105 peak PM trips in 2011 with 2,308 dwelling units yet only experience 1,580 peak PM trips when an additional 2,500, use whatever number you want, they say between 2,300 and 2,800, I picked 25 dwelling units are added? A number in the range of 2,000 to 2,200, I believe, would be more believable. If Metro believes a significant number of individuals will be walking, biking, and using transit through this intersection, why are those numbers not reflected in the transportation system plan for the South End Concept? And I just did a little bit of an informal survey on the way over here tonight. I come down South End Road to get to these meetings, and when I reached the intersection of Warner Milne and South End, I looked at the clock on the car. It was 4:40. When I reached High Street at the bottom of the hill, it was 4:43. Took me about two and a half minutes to come down that hill. In that period of time, which is an hour beyond what we're looking at as far as peak travel hours, there were 40 vehicles heading up the hill southbound toward that intersection. Now that represents, if I, if I figure it, two and a half minutes of time elapsed, that's 16 per minute, which if I multiply that out for an hour, I have about 960 just going southbound in an hour after the peak travel period. That's my concern, folks. I, I really think there's some, well, the citizens have elected you, and I don't remember any of you saying anything about, in your platforms, about representing anyone other than the city. So if you wanna, wanna represent Metro, that's fine. That helps my finances. Thank you.
I think Metro represents itself.
I mean, there, we've got representatives that people have elected in.
Yeah.
Ginger Redlinger and William Gifford, please.
Say hi to Joyce. Mayor, Commissioners, I was a member of the Southeast Community Advisory Team, so I thought I would come and speak. I'd like to say thank you for including the Oregon City School District in the development of the Southeast Community Concept Plan. The district looks forwards to work, looks forward to working with new families that will move to the area in the next 30 years as the plan rolls out. We also look forward to the improvements and innovations that come with well-planned development. There were many Southeast Community members that attended our meetings and events who helped us understand the variety of problems that come with planning for future growth. And as a Southeast Community Advisory Team member, I am pleased with the level of listening and adjustment to the plan that has occurred throughout, and I know it will continue. Hopefully, the plan will move at the right pace and continue to adapt to the needs of the current and future South End community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gifford?
I'm jealous.
[laughing].
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. Just a couple of comments. I didn't want to talk too much about traffic because that's gonna be, I mean, that is obviously the hot button.
Right.
Uh, you know, and it's pretty obvious that with limited access to a particular area that any growth in that area is gonna put a strain on those, on those access points. That's pretty obvious. I think we have to be careful about statistics, about, about professional statistics. We have to be wary of them, and we have to be wary about amateur statistics as well. And the truth is probably somewhere in between. Regardless of how bad it might be, it probably won't be as bad as it could be. So, not talking about traffic. I did want to, I did want to touch back on something that the mayor had mentioned about water, and I'm very concerned about water. And one of the things that I, I haven't really heard discussed too much, and I've been to all the open houses and so on, is the use of permeable pavement and paving and so on. And I think that some of you may be aware that I'm a strong advocate of uses of such things as cobblestones for non-high, highly-trafficked areas that are inexpensive and easy to maintain and so on. So I hope that there's some consideration about, I mean, I understand it's not gonna be wall-to-wall pavement, but you know, you pave paradise, put a parking lot. I'm just concerned that with the additional pavement that will be there, that water's gotta go someplace. And I would like for us to have some planning or some consideration given to putting that water back down in the ground where it would've gone anyway. Another thing about the additional traffic, and, and I agree, it's not realistic to think that a lot of geezers like me are gonna be walking that much instead of driving. However, one of the reasons that there is so much driving is because people that live in that area are going to need services. And I think that it's important for us to realize that without some convenience of services in those areas, that there will be more driving. So people are saying, "Oh, I don't want a convenience store, or I don't want a dry cleaner's, or I don't want a barber shop." I've heard of those things. But I think without those conveniences in that area, that there is gonna be a lot more driving. And I'm thinking that with those, and also some smaller cottage businesses, could reduce the commuting time, which is gonna contribute to a lot of the traffic. I'm just suggesting that some of those things could ameliorate the projections if all it was, was residential. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great comments, everybody.
Yeah. I, and I think, I think probably, I think probably the staff can explain it to me on some of these intersection drawings we have, we have, we have, we have Travis moving. We also have these decimal point figures. What do these represent?
I don't know that Tony has that because that comes from Paul.
No, but I think we've seen these kinds of pictures before. Do you have his, his?
Is that the volume over capacity? I don't have either.
I think it's the V over C.
Maybe volume over capacity, and if you remember, being over one is problematic. And so that's, that's the new measure that we've adopted through our transportation system plan. I'm guessing that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's probably, yeah.
It is.
Okay. Of course, we'll be hearing more about this. One of the things that, as I was looking at the maps that are presented, and some of them, I think, are our South End Concept Plan pieces are the percent, the percent traffic movement. And I hate to say this because I live on Parish Road, and you do show it connecting up between South End and Parish. The only, the only direct connector that exists there is Partlow. Whether, whether that can carry more traffic over to Central Point Road and with improvements that are made at the intersection of Warner, Parrot, and all those streets coming together, is the percentage that's predicted, can, can, can Central Point actually handle more that's indicated in these percentage figures that we see here?
I think it would be helpful. We've heard quite a bit tonight. We've heard quite a bit at Planning Commission. I think it'd probably be more instructive and for you and for us if we had, we bring this back.
Right.
We have the ability to properly address these.
I wasn't looking for an answer, no.
Okay. Because I mean, there, you know, when you start looking at the improvements that are being made at full build-out, if you make the improvements that are necessary, you know, there are certain findings that can, that can be made in terms of how those intersections will, will serve. You know, so yes, when you consider it today, Warner Milne, South End, Lynn, Leland Road intersection is an issue, but there are improvements projected. And so we can come back with what the results are of, of making those improvements and what that does to the transportation system.
Okay. Any questions I ask, I'm not intending you to give me an answer at this point.
Okay.
Those are the kinds of questions that are rising, and you wanna make sure that, that, and I'm sure, I'm sure they've been asked elsewhere.
They have.
Okay?
Mayor, I'd also like to suggest that if the Commissioner-
Mayor, I'd also like to suggest that if the Commission or members of the public have other questions, sometimes occur to you after a first blush like this, let us know as soon as you know, and that way we can better adjust, make sure that we do answer the questions later.
Very good. Now, we go on to our next item.
We would continue as requested.
Oh, yeah. Do I wish to continue?
February 19th, please.
Second.
All on paper?
Are we doing the voting on this?
Yes.
Okay, move by Commissioner Moon? Does that happen?
No, Rocky should go first.
Well, yeah, but it's on a different topic. On the computer screen.
Oh, it's on the library.
I'm sorry. My fault.
And then I was second.
Go ahead.
Got it.
All righty.
Oh, excuse me, I voted for Rocky Smith. No, no, no.
That's good.
I'm not ready.
Motion passes unanimously.
Anyway, so it's been continued until the second meeting in February, is that right?
Correct.
Yes, very good. With that, we're going to welcome up, I believe, I've got my agenda here, but Maureen Cole will speak to us.
Here I am, right here. So, good evening, Commission, and thank you. Could I ask DA Hildebrand to come up to the podium, please? DA is a member of our Library Board, and he's a liaison to the Architect Selection Committee, and is representing the Library Board tonight along with me. And we'd like to bring you some information about the bond measure and what has happened since we last met at a work session here. So, as you recall, at that time, we had a Bonds 101 conversation, and I was directed to go to the Library Board and, you know, make sure they were fully informed about what was going on, and get their approval to bring to you, so that we all move forward on the same page together. So, the day after our work session, they received the same Bonds 101 presentation, although they did not have the benefit of Carol Samuels, they had to put up with me as explaining it all. Hopefully, that was sufficient. And as Carol Samuels explained, there are three major things that need to be on the ballot for the bond title, and that is the description of the project, the maximum length of time that the bond would be repaid, and the maximum amount that would be borrowed. So, you know, pretty clear on the description of what the project is for. So, we discussed the maximum amount of money that would be borrowed and the maximum amount of time that it would be borrowed for. And as you saw in the figures that I brought to you, or that, you know, we had at the Bonds 101, the project is estimated to be 10 million. We have approximately 4 million or so at the time of construction, and so we need to borrow 6 million. We amortized out payments of what we can afford, that we've worked with the Finance Department to create, which would be a maximum of $475,000 annually. And that amortizes, that can be amortized at 20 years, and if we reduce it a little bit, an annual payment, it could be amortized over longer. So, we looked at those scenarios. And the longer you borrow, the more you pay, just like a mortgage. So, it was the Board's clear preference that we go for the shorter period of time because that saves the citizens really about a million and a half dollars. And it doesn't gain us much of anything to, in upfront money, or even annual costs if we lengthen it. It really is just not that much money to be worth a million and a half at the end. So, the Board voted for a $6 million maximum cap over a 20-year period of time. And so, we are in current conversation with Bond Counsel, and we've already started work on getting the ballot title together. Bill has, or, excuse me, Mr. Combsman has already looked at it, Nancy, the clerk has looked at it. So, we're already getting that language together and reviewed by the people who need to, we need to get it to the City Manager, of course. And Bond Counsel believes that, in my memo to you, I said that we would get this back to you by February 19th, but we believe we can get it to you as early as February 5th, which just gives us that little bit more of a cushion for all things required. So, that's where we are tonight. And DA, I don't know if you want to jump in and add anything?
We're ready to build.
All right.
If you don't have a plan, design.
We're ready.
Is this going to be a design and build type of thing?
How as fast as we can do it.
Yeah.
That's great. And now, my understanding is we're really committed to do it with current revenue sources.
Yes, we are really committed to do it with current revenue sources.
I think in terms of the public's support of it, to know that, that we're not going to raise taxes to accomplish that, my understanding is whether we get new revenue sources or not, we still have to go to a vote of the people on any bonded indebtedness.
Any bonded indebtedness requires a vote.
So, that's great, and I think we will be operating as volunteers, many of us in this effort, and look forward to it.
And we are putting what language we can in the ballot title describing that.
Yes.
So, that people know when they read it. And then, just FYI, we are interviewing architects tomorrow.
Very good.
DA will be helping with that effort.
Nice.
Yeah.
Very nice.
We're getting ready.
You will have a plan.
I have no idea, and everybody knows him as DA Hildebrand. I don't know if anybody knows what his name is, actually.
I do.
It was like BJ Honeycutt on the MASH series show. His name was BJ. Thank you very much.
Well, Rocky has a question.
I think we've asked this before, just wondering, are we aware of any other measures or bonds on the ballot for May in terms of school district, or college, or county, or anything else?
Are we keeping, we might, I mean, not that I want to change our timeline, but it might be good to know what else is going to be coming up in May, and whether or not that affects what we do. I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, I'll try to look into that.
I can help with that. We had our Clackamas County City Managers Area City Managers Meeting here about a week ago, and I asked them, unless their, unless some of their department heads have plans that the managers aren't aware of, or the elected officials have plans that they haven't told the managers yet, or the managers forgot, any of those are a possibility, but it doesn't appear that there are going to be any competing money measures at that time.
For cities.
And we asked the Fire District, I believe, too, the last time we met with them, I think Carol was there.
We did.
We asked that question as well. They do have some facility needs coming down the pike, but it's a ways off yet.
Okay.
And I could go ahead and check with the schools and the college.
Yeah, I don't think so, but.
It would be good to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, great, good question.
Anything else?
So, we're proceeding, and we should see you on February 5th with a resolution and some bond language to look at.
Great.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining, appreciate it.
Do we need a motion or anything like that?
I don't think there's any action needed. That was probably informational more than anything else. What comes to us actually to the Commission? The actual. The ballot title. The ballot title will be at the point of when we actually take action on it. With that, do I have a motion to pass a consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. Oh.
Motion passes unanimously.
Being passed at the mouth isn't sufficient. Anyway, with that, we'll go into the Managers' Report. You want to do your consent agenda first?
We just did it. We just did it.
You don't want to do it again? Okay.
First, Mayor, I'd like to introduce Cynthia Gates. Sergeant Gates is here tonight filling in for Chief Band, who couldn't be here this evening. And Cynthia is probably, I hope her taser battery is low, but she is so dedicated, she's here tonight, she, we had to actually send her home for a while because Cynthia is going, she's got some pretty rigorous dialysis that she goes through on a regular basis, and she needs a kidney. And so, she, but she's here, we asked her to go home and take care of herself and her family, and she was so determined to work for us and likes her job so much that she got special permission to come back. And she's here tonight, and we're just so proud of you, Cynthia, for your determination on behalf of your profession, on behalf of the department, your work ethic is stellar. And I just wanted to thank you for your service.
Yes. That's awesome. Thank you very much.
So, if any of you have an extra kidney, and it's got the right qualifications, let us know. Also, we wanted to, the CAFR I have tonight, and I'm proud to say that our Finance Department's done a great job on this, I'm going to hand out your hard copies here in a second, but I wanted to mention that there are, it is a clean opinion, there are no findings. And this is the first year, I think, maybe in the city's history that the Finance Department has done, usually when we contract with an auditor, we pay extra because we don't have the staff to do all of the, all of backup activities that they are required to do to prepare the CAFR. So, this year, our Finance Department did that internally, compiling all that information, still giving it to the auditors, and it saved us $9,000. So, I want to thank Mr. Parno and his staff for that effort. And they also have a really cool picture of our, and they got the wording right, too, if you look inside, it is the Oregon City Bridge.
Oh, nice.
Very good.
Somebody remembers my first council meeting when I said Westland Bridge. They kept me on, I don't know why.
I accidentally said that, too.
What?
No, actually, it was in front of you.
I missed it, though, I wasn't here for that. But I had a copy for each of you. There's a transmittal letter inside that typically has the City Manager's signature on it, along with the Finance Director, and somehow there's a clerical thing where Wyatt and I didn't communicate it well enough, and my signature's not on there, but I have seen it and signed off on it. So, Wyatt's signature is on there. So, here's your copies.
Oh, good.
A little light reading?
Can we forward your signature on it, and can we see it?
If you want to, that's fine.
Can we bring it up to you?
And also, the Urban Renewal Agency report is also in there, and it had a similar result, a clean audit, so. I have a couple of other things to announce. I want to ask Mr. Conkle to comment a little bit about our, the Keene event coming up for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project is coming up on February 6th at the Keene Headquarters in Portland. And Tony, you want to mention that and tell us a little bit more detail?
Yes, thank you. So, on February 6th, from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM, the Keene Foot Square Headquarters up in the Pearl, it's at 515 Northwest 13th Avenue, we're going to have the first Thursday with Willamette Falls Legacy Project. So, it's essentially a culmination of the work that's been going on all summer, showing the demonstration plans, really thanking everyone who's been involved, invites have been sent out to a lot of the folks who participated, the stakeholders, anyone's welcome to come to that event. And it's really to, once again, showcase the product, where we've gotten to, tell a little bit of the history, and then, you know, one of the more important parts of this is champion building, and trying to engage and get folks to be champions for the project for the foreseeable future while we continue to try and redevelop the Willamette Falls Legacy Project on the Blue Heron property.
When is this again, Tony?
It is Thursday, February 6th, from 5:30 to 8:00. And it's, you don't need to be there for the whole time, it's, you know, come, and you can come and go.
Seeing is limited, though, isn't it? Take the bus. The party is horrible.
We're calling this a celebration, really, because it was such a joint effort that got us this far, and I would like to encourage each of you to bring guests, too, because as Mr. Conkle mentioned, we are looking for champions for the project, because in some sense, this has been the easier part. But when it comes down to knocking on doors and going to far and wide places, asking for money and assistance and all those other things that some of you have been involved in already, we're going to need champions. So, it's, please bring people, bring guests if you'd like, and let us know, because we'd like to accommodate them as well.
It's also right on the North-South Street car line.
You would know that.
I know that. Go by it often.
And I assume the Commission's already on that list as champions, right?
That's our assumption.
Would you like to be on the list? What?
So, would you like to be?
Absolutely, yes.
Given your unanimous votes on the project in the past, we are not assuming too much, but we are assuming you're champions. Also, there's a Partners Group meeting coming up. Tony, you want to give us the date on that?
It is Monday, January 27th. The Partners Group, as you may recall, is essentially acts like, we check in with them, it's the two elected officials and the Chief Administrator Officer from Oregon City, Clackamas County, Metro, and then we also have Representative Barton, Senator Olson, and Bobby Leef in the Regional Solutions Office out of the Governor's Office, and the trustee. We come back and revisit with them, touch in, give them an update on where we are in the process, what the products are recreated, and the steps forward. So, that will be happening, I apologize here, January 27th, at the Museum of the Oregon Territory.
And we have had at or near perfect attendance at those. So, we think we have, we think we have the kind of commitment that we've been hoping for all along in the project.
So, that's Monday, January 27th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM at the Museum of the Oregon Territory.
And then, Tony, I believe you also have an update on Langley regarding their offer on the property?
Yeah, Langley Investment Properties has been in discussion with Peter McKittrick, the bankruptcy trustee. They entered into negotiations for purchasing the property. That went in front of the bankruptcy court January 3rd, and then again on January 10th. There were no overbids, so they went to the court approving the contract. The contract has not been signed yet, but essentially what the contract lays out, just the highlights of it are that Langley has 24 months to close on the property. If they close within the first 12 months, the sale price is 4.9 million. If it takes more than the 12 months, so between 12 and 24 months, the sale price is 5.75 million. There are two installments, essentially the bankruptcy trustee has a carrying cost on the property of approximately $30,000 per month. On February 1st of 2014, so the end of this month, Langley's required to put up one-half of the 720,000, so 360,000 would be due on February 1st, to which the trustee would begin drawing out 30,000 a month to operate the property. So, that's the update that we have right now. So, we have, the contract was made public through the bankruptcy hearing process, and so we're still waiting on the signature and then the deposit of the 360 and the escrow for the trustee. So, we'll keep you informed as to the status of that.
You know what, I have a question, and you may not know the answer, and that's okay. And when the mill closed, there was like 175 people that lost their job. So, does that, like, the money that that company pays the trustee, does that go to, like, the project, or does it go to the people that lost their jobs, or is that up to the bankruptcy person, or?
It goes to the, those who are still owed money. So, right now, Sempra is a company that is next in line to be paid.
Oh, okay. So, they have a list?
Yes. Priority list of who gets paid in bankruptcy first.
Yes, Sempra, and then Oregon Department of Energy is owed a little bit over a million dollars, they have a lien on the front office.
So, those guys get paid?
Correct.
And then we get paid?
Distribution, and if there were money left, enough money, then everyone on the list would get something.
Oh, okay.
Our concern has pretty much been that there's not going to be enough there for.
Other smaller things as well.
Okay. All right, well, that was just a question that popped into my head.
Good question.
I think the answer is, unfortunately, that they, that you won't see the employees getting that much.
Okay, it'll be the business people. Got it.
Okay, so next we have, I got a call late this afternoon from Ron Wyden's office, and the Senator is going to be having a town hall listening session next Friday, January 24th, at the Pioneer Community Center. And we're really glad that he's coming to hear from our citizens and to share what his activities have been in Washington. We don't have a firm time yet, but the tentative time is 2:30 PM, and that'll be firmed up later, and I'll send out more information. They've also asked Mayor Neely to introduce the Senator, and he's agreed to do that.
And that's on the 24th?
Yes, 24th, January 24th, it's next Friday.
Oh.
At the Pioneer Center. And last but not least, this coming year is our 40th anniversary of our And last but not least, this coming year is our 40th anniversary of our sister-city relationship with Tatsushina, Japan. And they've been so diligent about sending people to Oregon City over the years, I know we've sent a few people over the years, I think they probably have us pretty hard and fast on the numbers. But we are, I've looked at the commission's travel training budget, and you've been very frugal in the last 12 months and have not used a lot of your training and travel budget. So we do have sufficient funds in there for commissioners to receive airfare and a rail pass. There are costs for you individually, you know, above and beyond the airfare and the rail pass, but the city does have budgeted funds for that. So those of you who would like to go can go with that stipend if you so choose. And the mayor asked me to bring this up under my report, so you could discuss it among yourselves and make sure there's a consensus about how many are going and who wants to go, and so.
That's good. Shall I wait until you're done?
Yes, I'm ready for you to give me the direction the group would like to give.
Okay.
You can lead.
I'll lead, okay. So I have a couple of questions. I thought we were going to discuss this at our goal setting, but I guess not.
We can. One issue comes up that there are seats currently on a given flight that occurred the day afterwards, the seats are almost gone, and apparently those seats can go quite quickly.
Okay. So I understand the relationship, but it's not been high priority for us as a commission to talk about that. And now, all of a sudden, David took the trip, and now there's a little bit of money left over, and so, you know, I just, I just feel very awkward about it. I think our citizens will feel awkward, because like, are we going to go and ask for jobs to come here? What does the agenda kind of look like? You get three days in our sister city, and so, I don't know, I guess I need more information, but I, at this point, feel kind of awkward about taking that money. Because it kind of looks like it might be just kind of like a fun little trip, which I'm okay with fun, but I don't want to do it at taxpayers' expense.
I had made a recommendation in an email that we send to people, and I'll defend it, I'll defend it. We have had representatives, including their equivalent of council members and their equivalent of mayor coming and visiting us in the past. I don't know, it's a tremendous economic benefit to the city, and I think this is a very good question, however, they send students over and, on an annual basis. And I, I thought it would be nice if we could, and I don't know, we might send, the school district or entities might send students over from Oregon City too, I presume that's the case. But I think it's a great educational opportunity, and I was thinking particularly of our commissioners that either, that are specifically tied to young people, Carol, because first of all, she's got children.
We all have children.
That are young.
No, we don't.
I'm thinking that should not be a criteria.
Children that are young.
I'm thinking that children should not be a criteria.
Rock, well-
I think we can all represent children, even if we don't-
No, no, I'm just talking about exchanges. And Rocky Smith, being with the school district, I think, I think maybe there are opportunities for, for, to build those kinds of tie-ins for communication between the two cities. If, and I made that suggestion in an email, I guess an expectation I would have was be that we have the commissioner representation at these meetings of Tatsushina.
Well, personally, I think we need to back it up and have like a work session with the group that, you know, we have the sister city committee, we've never talked with them. I have no idea what they're doing. Do you guys know? Do you guys go to their meetings? Is there a meeting?
Until, until this last Monday, yeah, they have regular meetings.
I mean, I've not had any contact, so I don't even know what their plan is. And if, if we want to have Rocky go to kind of promote citizen, you know, the, the schools, then the schools should pay for it.
Well-
So, I don't know, I'm just telling you.
The dates were June, the dates were in June, right?
Yeah.
Like, do we know, yeah.
You were in school.
Well, yeah, and school doesn't get out to the 12th, so.
She probably went work rate.
So, yeah, I don't know.
Close one. And I think in one of the emails we sent you the name and contact information for the sister-city coordinator, Elise Lunas.
Yes.
And Elise has been doing that apparently for many years, and she's got a lot of knowledge about the experience and what she has planned. I haven't been, the city staff haven't been involved in their plans, and their trip is, I think was already actually on their schedule, even before the trip I took for ICMA. So I don't, I don't know, but you could certainly reach out to her, or I could ask her to contact some of you or all of you.
I just think that it just kind of, I mean, we haven't had any discussion with this committee group that we should be talking to.
And it isn't in our budget.
Yeah.
Well, it is in the travel budget for the commission. We haven't used our commission, is that correct, David?
You, you really haven't used a lot of that, and I think, frankly, I think it's due to some of the personal circumstances some of you have endured in your time on the commission. And so we have, we have basically funds in there that are for travel and training, and part of that is to get a different perspective, whether you're visiting a different city, a different state, or a different country, part of that perspective we think would be beneficial to the commissioners. But that's got to be something you're, you know, sort of a political decision.
Which, I understand, but I would like to see some kind of a job or an economic tie to it, not just to go and, you know.
Can I say something? I think that we need to look at this in a little bit different light. We have a lot of opportunities come up to us that we prepare for. And this is in the future, this is five, six months down the road. We, we get ourselves educated on things and prepare for things that are upcoming, say the railroad presentations that we were given, the economic development things that I went to with, where is he? With Eric. So we learn about those things, and then we go ahead and do our presentations and take in our information. I think this is an opportunity that, that we can't afford to pass up as a city commission, to learn about the sister-city programs ourselves, to represent Oregon City, to repay some of what they've brought to us. And I think that anyone that is available to go on the commission, should be allowed to go.
Well, I understand that, but I still go back to, we've had no conversation with them over three years that I've been on the commission. So I, they are part of our organization, and then, I don't know, I would prefer just to give them the money and let them go.
Well, I, I hear what you're saying, and I think that communication is really important, and we should have more communication with them and know their mission, exactly what they do and their process and everything. But I, we do have a global economy, and I think it's important for us to have good relationships with, you know, other, especially our sister city.
Sure. Sure, I get that.
And, you know, think out, think outside the box and expand our horizons a little bit, and we can always learn something from people.
Well, we could make a formal motion.
Exactly.
It's a process.
It is a process.
You're talking about it, and, you know, we, we have a little bit of time, the concern, the mayor mentioned this, but in one of the emails I got from the coordinator, it was availability of flights, and as you know, as you wait longer, sometimes the prices spike up considerably, so I think they're concerned about that.
And I'll tell you, I did look at the flight, and just from the time I looked at it when we first got that email to today, there were seats booked on that flight. So they are going quickly.
So I think that's part of the reason that we felt like it was maybe something we should bring up tonight, and you can still talk about it further if you would like to later, whether it be a goal-setting update or a future work session, we could invite the coordinator to come and speak with you, or any of those things. But I felt like it was sort of my responsibility, at least bring it to your attention, given the flight schedules and so on.
Oh, sure.
What's your opinion?
I don't really have an opinion. I mean, I see its merits. I, I appreciate the input in terms of me going, I don't think it's possible in terms of the time schedule from myself, in terms of the school, my work schedule, but I, I mean, I think you brought up a good point as well, but I don't have a problem discussing it later. I don't know, I mean, I see, I do see the value in it, I guess I would like to see a stronger connection between the city and the sister-city group, because-
Well, the committee itself.
I know, it's been active for quite some time, and I remember, I think in high school, I designed a quilt, or I designed quilt squares in high school that went to the sister-city. I don't know if the quilt still exists there or not, but, so I think that partnership is very important.
When I was there visiting, I saw, they took me up on this hill on a park overlooking their city, I think it's the highest point in their city, and it, right below it is a grow, an apple orchard, that's one of their primary industries actually, is apple, growing apples there. And there was a marker there with Alice Norris's name on it, and their mayor's name, and Alice had been there once during her tenure as mayor. And next to it, they had a tree named after our current mayor, it said Doug Fur on it. They had two of them. I have a picture of it to prove it, too. I'm going to show that to you later. But they did have trees that were brought from Oregon City, and then they had the National Tree of Japan there, and there was sort of a little area where they, they take the relationship very seriously.
Absolutely.
And it's interesting too, because when our sister-city relationship was formed, the two cities were nearly identical in size. And what is happening in Japan is a, an aging population situation that's much, even much more extreme than the one we face. And so, Tatsushina has, has declined in population now to, I think it's just a little bit below 10,000. And so we were almost the same size, and now we're, it's really kind of a mismatch as far as when, I think that we have more to offer them in some sense than they have to offer us, because we've, we've grown and learned a lot, and they've been trying to adjust to the demographic shift that is happening. And Japan, you know, has well over 100 million people, but 14% of them live in Tokyo, and they're headed more and more to the larger cities. Someone was talking tonight about stormwater, and I have a whole presentation that I've been working on, I took 500 pictures when I was there, and I have a lot of them for our public works director, because when you talk about space utilization and how to manage water, especially in the more, the larger cities with the enormous densities, space in the shower, space in the parking lot, space everywhere is at a premium, and the way they deal with things is kind of just eye-opening. It's, it's just sort of a different perspective that you get from that, and you come away in some sense impressed, in another sense you're overwhelmed with, we could do that, we could do this, we could do that. And then you get home and think, how are we going to do all that stuff? Because it's taken them, you know, it's part of their culture, I mean, it's hundreds of years, it's a culture that is so much older than ours. We're an old city, we think. My wife is from Romania, and she went to a high school that's 4,000 years old or something. And so when I came, I brought her here and said, look at all these old buildings, and she said, they're all new. So it's a matter of perspective, and when you, when you go to Japan, I just, you know, whether you pay your way or whatever, I think the cost of this stipend is less than half the expense of the trip. But you have to be comfortable with that. I, I was just trying to be helpful, I didn't want to cause any consternation among any of you, I just wanted to be helpful, because I thought that this would be an opportunity for us, giving the anniversary and so forth, so.
Since the two people I suggested are going to be here the next two years, well, three years actually, mostly this year.
You really don't know that, because Kathy and I could be back.
Yeah, we could be back.
No, but we know, we know those two, we know those two. And I do know that I won't be, but.
Yes, yes.
The, I think stronger involvement of the commission with the sister-city program is important, and maybe, maybe among the members that are here in the next commission that we've formed that bond, I would suggest that that could start now if somebody wants to attend the sister-city committee.
And also, I suggest that we get a report from them, like we do our other advisory committees. I think that's very important, we should have them come and report to us and-
And I'll have to actually explore the, someone said they're, I'm not sure they're an entity of the city, I think they're, they certainly have been, I think they have, the initial charter relationship was endorsed by the city, but I don't really know over the years how much, I don't think there's been a lot of city participation except for Mayor Norris's visit. I do think, did John Williams go?
John Williams and Andy Alequem, they paved their own way, they were not subsidized by the city.
And I, and you know, at the time, at that time, the city was in such a financial condition, it could barely make payroll.
Right.
And because you've been frugal and prudent with their financial management over the years, you can now have a budget at least to do these kinds of, of things.
The garden, the wooded area on, at the senior center, in fact, is a, is a sister-city project. And I, I think we need to set up a more formal relation, we're not going to appoint their members, of course, but-
No, no, but I mean, we should-
If we had representation on it, and I'll just, I'll just put this forward, I'm just asking the ones that we know will be here next time, would one or the other, both of you be interested in going to their meetings?
When do they meet?
Is that right?
I don't know.
I believe it's Monday, they just met this week.
Right.
It's one Monday a month, it looks like the second Monday.
And they meet, they meet in the back here. While the planning commission is meeting there in the back room. And I knew nothing of this until I went to that meeting.
Yes, I think that would be-
So is there interest?
I'd be interested if it's in the evening, I don't know if it's in the evening or during the day.
It is.
It is in the evening.
It's during the planning commission meeting.
Yeah, I think that's something we should-
I guess, I guess the chair, almost all the chairs that have existed over the 40 years are still there. John Salisbury served as chair for 10 years, the next person served for 10 years, I think the next person served for 10 years.
So they've served a lot, so who pays their trip to Japan?
They do, they do.
They do.
Yeah, that's their interest, we don't.
So we could give them our stipend.
Well, that's a thought.
They're the ones that have been paying their way for all these years, volunteering.
My suggestion would be, I think, I think they can do it, they've got a couple of students that are going, whether maybe the students could use additional support when this, yeah, so.
I don't know if it's legal, but.
Well, I think we could, I mean, I think we could do it.
I would want to talk to the attorney about it, also would like to talk to Elise Lunas about it, because she's been the one, she was so incredibly generous with her time and helpful to me in arranging my trip.
Right.
And to find out what is it you want, because sometimes if you've been successful with fundraising, you don't necessarily want to set up a model where, you know, I just would like to talk to her first before-
I think there's a difference.
I think they, they'd like a more of a presence of our city government.
That's exactly-
I did ask them about attendance from commission members before I brought it to you, I talked to the mayor first about this to see if he would have any heartburn with me at least bringing it up to you, and then I sent you all an email. Before I did that, I talked to Ms. Lunas about this, and I said, would, do you think that, would you like to have, because their planning of this trip is already well underway, and I said, would you like to have, would you like me to ask commission members if any of them would like to go, or the mayor? And they were, she was very positive about that, she said that would be wonderful, because I think that that shows a different kind of commitment from the city.
Sure.
And you would be there representing the city, and some of these folks that are going on a trip, they don't necessarily, aren't necessarily representing the city, and certainly haven't been elected in the capacity of representing the city as you have. So, just something to think about.
Well, unless, unless they give her a vote to commit money to somebody getting stipend, we'd have to hear it, I think. I don't think we can wait till the goal-setting session.
And, and you can decide part of this tonight, and then give me a chance to talk to her about what kind of support they might need or want from the city, but I think the most important thing right now, because they're going to go, no matter what you do.
Right.
They've got their plans already. So I think if you could come to a consensus tonight about who and how many of you might want- might want to go, then, and how this works, by the way, just so you know, is the city would be reimbursing, just like we do when you do other kinds of travel. So, the arrangements are sort of up to you with the assistance of Elise and her group. And then we, the city would reimburse after you bring your documents to us.
They individually make their own point reservations on that flights.
Mm-hmm, yeah. But she's a big help.
Yeah.
Trust me. She's got all the logistics worked out, and she's this many trips, I don't know how many trips she's been on over there, but more than one.
So, do I hear any motion?
William wants to go.
Well, really, it's a question of whether, whether we're agreed to funding part of the travel of any of the commissioners.
I move that we do fund travel of the commissioners.
How many?
Do we need to decide that in a separate motion or this motion?
Well, if it passes, then we probably have to talk about the amount where.
Well, my suggestion would be if you're gonna do that, say up to, and pick a number. Because some of you might not be able to go. Some of you may change your mind.
I will say up to five. Well, four and the mayor.
Members of the commission, this is not your, no, I, this is a money issue. I think you can speak a lot of things, why it'd be a good thing, but I, I got a problem with more than, more than two people going for another reason. It is a quorum, and even if you don't talk about city business and so forth, I think it, I think it gives a, an image that we don't necessarily need to have. Because you're probably gonna be together for most of that time.
Yeah.
And so, I, I don't think I can support five people going.
Well, there are instances where people can be together outside of, and not be in a quorum.
You're correct.
So, I don't think that's an issue.
I'm talking about appearance more than anything else.
Well, I don't think that that's.
Well, I hear a second.
Is there a second?
To Kathy's motion?
Yeah.
I'll second it, because two is up to five.
We have three reerving. Now, maybe we better talk about the, the amount that we're willing to commit out of $8,000.
Well, 2,000 was what?
Yeah, it's, we have about 1,500 apiece for the airfare, and that gets you a basic seat. Mayor, that'll be interesting for you. And then the other 500 is a rail pass. And I'm saying that because the, you know, it's, I just flew to Kansas City with my knees in my chest.
But you're just talking about my life.
I know, you're used to, I've seen you in that Prius. I know you're used to that. The other 500 would be for the rail pass, so what we have is reimbursement up to 2,000 per person.
Per person. So, that's already been decided.
All right. Well, I think then it's up to the individual commissioners to make their decision.
Yeah.
Want to give a deadline?
Well, it's for the June trip.
Whether they're going to go or not.
As a group, are we?
No, no. The individual commissioners have to make their own arrangements in terms of.
Additional expense?
Yeah, additional expenses and everything else.
Well, I've been cleared by my job.
Yeah, that's fine. So, what I'm saying is that then you need to find out the mechanisms of getting onto the flight and so forth.
Read the emails we sent you, and then give Elise a call if you have any questions. Because we did send out emails this week as well, and you'll, don't forget your passports and all the other.
What I don't want to do, though, is make a reservation and then have all this pulled back.
It won't.
You have authorized me tonight to reimburse the commission.
Up to $2,000.
Up to 2,000 per person for those that want to go.
Yeah.
And I suspect there's just not gonna be five of you. I mean, I would be very surprised if all of you can swing that, but we're, we'll be under budget.
It's not a bad thing.
Okay. So, and what I said is up to the individual commissioners to decide whether we want to go and then to make the arrangements to do so.
But I think Nancy wants a timeframe, like this week or next week, or.
Well, I'm just concerned about the flight.
Yeah, I think the arrangements have to be in, making a reservation on that particular flight.
You either make the flight with the team or you don't.
Yeah, and the premium seats were the ones filling up.
Yeah, these are pretty.
And just let me suggest that because the reimbursement amount that you've authorized me for is 2,000 per person, the sooner you make your reservation, the better off, the further your reimbursement will go. So, you have your own incentive there. But also, let me know, because I did make one trip there, and I took a lot of notes. And I'm gonna be doing a presentation here at City Hall sometime during a day, during a lunch hour, inviting our employees and so forth, and I would, I will let you know when I'm ready to do that. Because even for those of you that don't go, I've cut my 500 photos down to something much more reasonable, like just, I don't know, 40 or 50. And I'm gonna keep it down to 30 minutes, so I don't bore people to death, but it's.
You take as many pictures there as you did of your child since.
Not even close.
Sorry. There's nowhere to go from there, isn't there? I did take a lot of pictures, but, you know, I was there on a, sort of a different kind of mission. The sister city thing happened for me just the last two days, and that was also the time that we lost Officer Lippke. So, it was a whirlwind of, you know, kind of an awkward, weird time to be there at the sister city portion. And then before that, I was, we were doing a lot of work. We had a lot of statistics, and they, they had us going to seven, eight, nine things a day, and.
I would like you, because all five of us are not going to do it, I would like you to give some thought as to a gift that we can send back. They sent the flag, their flag to us and so forth, so that the members of our commission that go there
Yes.
can present a, maybe a comparable gift.
We will, we will do that. We will, actually, I'll brainstorm with Nancy and our other staff, because on my trip, we took these little Myrtlewood Christmas ornaments, and then the police department had given me a bunch of these little badge medallions, which I, turned out, I gave, I didn't tell the chief this, but I gave them to quite a few of the firefighters I met in Tokyo. And they just, it made their day. It was kind of exciting to watch the reaction that we got from those. So, our PD is represented far and wide. But that's a great idea, and we'll brainstorm, Mayor, on some ideas and put something together and email you, because you will want to take, even on this June trip, they expect the packaging is very important, and we can help you with that, because we, they look at that. The paper and the way they use that is important to them, and I know you want to make a good representation. One of the things I took was some jars of smoked salmon from Tony's down here, down the way. And of course, that was very popular. Another one of our delegates was from New Orleans, and she brought a bunch of seasonings and jumbo or gumbo kind of things that they could, you know, I'm not sure what their reactions were, but they were very curious, very curious about New Orleans and the music. She brought some CDs from Louis Armstrong and things like that. And it was really, you know, we, our delegates came from all over. The delegate from Canada brought some maple syrup and some other, other Canadian things that he could get on the plane. And so, we'll try to think of some creative things, because they are very generous. They're gonna treat you really well when you go there. And the homestay experience that I had was with one of the chief mapping engineers for tsunami intervention and prevention. And he took me on a tour and showed me these elevated towers and structures where people could scurry up to. And, and then we looked at the berms and different things that they were building, and things that had failed, and things that they were trying to figure out how much higher to build it. And his house, he had these giant computers with all these maps of all the time flows, and they were interactive in 3D. It was just amazing, the technology that they use. And, but the sad part is, he said, if we have a Sendai, you know, we were walking on one of these berms one morning, his daughter and I, and he said, if we have a Sendai event here, I asked him, what would happen? I'm looking around at these things that they have in the sky, and he says, he said, we're, he said, millions of us will be gone. We can't, we can't design for something like that. I mean, even if, you know, they're an island and they're at sea level most, it's either sea level or mountains. You know, there's not a lot of in-between. In North America, we have a lot of in-between. So, it's, it's just a fascinating culture, and I was just really proud of our 40-year relationship, because we were the city and that delegation that had the longest sister city relationship of any of the other delegates.
There was a, I think it was on public OPB where they were talking about a village which actually had prepared a wall of sufficient height to withstand a tsunami. When the earthquake came, the city dropped six feet. The wall dropped, and the water went over the wall. Because, I mean, they designed it for the current elevation of the city, which would have been fine if the city hadn't changed.
Two of the more active sister city participants in Tateshina, one is a retired English teacher there. And, and he says English, English teacher, and he, but he likes sake, so be forewarned when you go. Keep your hand over your cup after a certain, after a certain exposure. But he, he was an interesting man. He lived in Nagasaki. And another, one of the people, Mr. Ito, that I stayed with in one of the lodges there, one of their ski lodges, he, his father was killed in a Japanese submarine in World War II. So, when they found out that, I grew up near Independence, Missouri, they wanted to ask me all about Harry Truman, and that led to a very long discussion. And then the interpreter was not at full capacity, so it was a long night. But it's, they're really warm, friendly people, and you will learn a lot about how they look at the world and how we look at them. And when I returned, one of my things was I could hardly believe that we had ever been at war with, with them, just the way they treated us. So, anyway. Let me know if you have any more offline questions or anything. I'll be as helpful as I can to you in making your decisions. That's all for my report.
I will, I will let William say something if he wishes. We don't normally do this, but it's my turn, so I'll yield a minute or two of my time.
Or less. It's sort of devolved.
A minute or two.
Devolved into a work session, anyway. City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. I can't underestimate or underemphasize the value of the cross-cultural experience in learning how other communities deal with problems that we're gonna have to deal with, or we have dealt with, or that they may. I just think it's absolutely invaluable. One thing that, that I don't know was considered, but for one of the most valuable things that we could learn about how they manage their city, it seems to me that wouldn't it be a great idea, this is just off the cuff, to have our, our Director of Public Works see how they do things. There.
That would be something that would be in transportation. That's something I could support.
You can yield your money.
Well, it's not really my money, but, you know.
The, the thing I wanted to mention is the last Metro meeting, there was a presentation about the job growth in the Metro region. Throughout the state, throughout most counties, it has been poor since the recession. It has have not made up for the recession. Washington County had more than made up for the losses of the recession by quite a bit, and Multnomah County has done so, too. However, Clackamas County lost 50,000 jobs during the recession, and it's only made up about a third of them. What I wanted to suggest for perhaps a future commission meeting is, and I'll find out who was specifically that made the report, to invite them to talk more about Clackamas County, its situation, not only Oregon City, how it's fared, but the point is, we are a major employment center. And, and so, the kinds of things that we need to do or probably to, to help will have impacts to the rest of the county. And so, I think it would be a good thing to have somebody, have this group come and speak to us specifically about the, the, the problems that we're having in the economy.
Absolutely.
I agree, and the county's plans and how they can work together.
Mayor, you said a group. Do you have someone in mind?
I'll find, I'll find, get the name of the person who actually made the presentation.
Do we have any, well, this is county question, I guess, but any large projects that were long-term put on hold during the recession? Did anybody can think of?
Speak up.
In the county?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you meant in the city, this project.
Oh, in the county? I don't know about that.
Smith Landfill was, well, the Sunrise, Sunrise, but I don't know that, that was probably due to the economy.
Had an effect on.
Does anybody else have any reports?
I do. I don't know. Do you want to start?
Oh, no, I don't have any.
Okay. So, the mayor and Rocky and I attended the South Fork Water Board meeting, and I want to thank Wyatt for his work on our audit. It all came back looking very good, and so, we're doing very well there. I don't know if you guys have anything else you want to add to it. We're working with the whole Sunrise and.
CRW.
CRW.
Meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, so that'll be fun. The other thing, I was able to attend my neighborhood meeting last night. Usually, I can't because we have a work session. But it was very informative. We had Willamette Falls Legacy Project. Kelly was there. And Pete was there talking about volunteer tree planting project that we're gonna be looking at, maybe getting a grant for that, but he's gonna bring that to us. And the other thing is, I don't know if everybody gets this at our neighborhoods, but we got our police report, too. So, it kind of tells you what, you know, what activities have been going on in your neighborhood. It's awesome. So, that's all I have.
And is that available on the website, the police reports?
Yeah, I don't know about that.
People to look at?
Chris usually does it.
At our chat meeting, I know Chris Wadsworth has it, and she's our community outreach. And it's great to have her. And she goes to all those neighborhood association meetings.
Well, they have an officer at most of them, I think.
Yeah, she tries to get them all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, anyways, I encourage you, if you don't have that at your neighborhood meeting, I encourage you to contact Chris and ask her if you can get that.
Okay.
Just a comment regarding that report. That report does not overlap with the neighborhoods as such. They're different districts or different territories.
Well, she tries to get it down to just your district, just your neighborhood.
I haven't seen the new one yet. I'm getting it tomorrow night, but.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, Chris does an awesome job with that.
I think we have 10 neighborhoods, and they have like seven.
Yeah, the districts are a little bit different than the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
We try to kind of get it closer.
But it gives you an idea what they are.
It's great, though, but thank you. So, Chris, thank you.
Anything? Yes?
Along that line, I get a, an alert system called Alert ID, which is a free thing you can sign up for. And you specify the circumference of the area you want reports on. So, anytime that there's something happening in your neighborhood, you get a blog, like, or blurb, like, you know.
So, what is it called again?
AlertID.com. And it's got really accurate stuff. I get two or three things a day usually going on.
Oh, that's awesome.
Second thing is, on the 26th, our, not the McLaughlin neighborhood, but we've got the little Dutch camp neighborhood going on up there. I'm going to be giving a presentation on emergency preparedness and taking care of your neighbors.
Nice, nice.
So, if anybody's wanting to come down.
Where is it, Megan?
It will be at Fourth and Madison, on the corner. We're just gonna stand up. No.
Just stand out there and stay.
Janine Offutt's house.
Okay, oh, yes.
So, but it's, it's usually just that Dutch camp area, so.
Nice, yeah.
Okay, anything else we could worry?